I can have everybody's attention for what I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order. At this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Mike Mesmore to lead us in an invocation.
Oh God, save thy people and bless thy inheritance, and grant wisdom upon the people in this room, and good health, and success in life, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit on earth.
Please join me in the fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. Glad to have all of you here tonight. We have a lot of you in the audience that we have a chance to recognize. First item on the agenda, though, is public announcement of events. So we're gonna have the staff come forward, make that presentation on the upcoming events.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City residents. I'd like to invite the public, as much as all of the Commissioners and Mayor, to our upcoming events for October and November. October the 19th, Saturday, this Saturday, we have the Zombie Run that'll be hosted by Mid Valley Events at the Arroyo Park. On October 31st, we have the Fourth Annual Halloween the Park at Rangerville. It's, the planning stage is looking good, and all the community and outer towns are welcome to come and participate, and even volunteer if they want to volunteer for this event. On November 2nd, we have the Blues on the Hill, celebrating Texas music, and with the Benja I Institute Dallas Cowboys for the festival at the Longs Hill Park. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, Ken, where are you gonna make your announcement now?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and everybody in the audience. I just wanna make you aware that we have an upcoming community input workshop on October 26th, which is a Saturday. It starts at 8:30 in the morning. We'll have coffee, and pastries, and fruit there, and we're gonna talk about the infrastructure for the future of the city, and housing for the future of the city, two very important subjects. We particularly like to get people who live out in the different neighborhoods across the city that have any concerns, or things that they want to talk to us about with regard to streets, drainage, water, sewer, the infrastructure, the housing in your neighborhoods, and that sort of thing. And then, on the next slide, we have a survey site called TellMeHarlingen.com, and there's a survey on there that takes about 12 to 15 minutes to take. It's in both English and Spanish. We would like for everyone to go home tonight after this meeting, and bring that up, and take that survey to provide us valuable information for preparing our new plan on how to guide where we want the city of Harlingen to go over the next 10 to 15 years. And we'd like to invite all the young kids to get online and take that as well, because your input's important too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you, and thanks to everybody who participated in the public forum workshop on Saturday. Thank you. So great, great discussion. Item two is the biennial Harlingen Trash Off Day event scheduled for, which was scheduled for Saturday, October 12, 2013, at the Costa Alastair parking lot, 1204 Fairmark, from 8:00 AM to noon. The city manager's gonna give us a report on this.
Mayor, Commissioners, I wanted to give you a quick update on what happened this past Saturday. We had a lot of volunteers out there. We had a couple of organizations. We had Grace Point Fellowship, and you see a picture of some of the volunteers that we had out there. They were very energetic. We also had the Marine Military Academy, the Key Club. Certainly, they were also very energetic, assisting to unload all the trash and debris that we got for that day. We had Long Elementary, the Student Council, they were out there helping us pick up some of the litter, so we're very happy that they were there. The American Legion Post Number 205, we had the Tamayo House, and you see some of the pictures of some of the volunteers that were there. We picked up, well, they actually came by and delivered about 11 tons of debris, which is a lot of, a lot of trash. We're happy because of that. We collected 179 tires, as you can see, plenty of tires. So it was overall a great event, and it happened this October the 12th, and typically, we have these events twice a year, and we have it from 8 to noon. And basically, you know, we invite the community to come in. It's a community-wide trash-out day where citizens can dump their trash for free, at no cost. They must be residents of the city of Harlingen. Acceptable items are furniture, appliance with no free end, tires, we have a limit of four, and also electronics. So certainly, we want to thank everybody that participated, and I think we've got some certificates there that we're gonna hand out to some of the volunteers that assisted on that day.
If you want to help with this, I'd like to first call up the Long Elementary Student Council. Are they here? Long Elementary. Everybody come up here, looking that direction. A little farther. All the way. Put the city Harlingen banner up. There you go. Come on, let's go to the Red House. If they're gonna take your picture, we want, and we're gonna, you're gonna get it, you can go see it on the city's website, iharlingen.us. I'm gonna put your picture on the city's website. A little taller, and so, end of the back. All right, come on. Charlie's got a great picture. Well, I guess a few more people than Charlie are taking pictures tonight, so let them take their pictures. Okay, I'd like, y'all stay right, stay right there with Mr. Pettis. I, I want to thank you, and your aunt, and all the city commissioners, want to thank every one of you for your hard work on Saturday. Did you all pick up some, did you help put some trash in some bins, carry stuff? And you helped us clean up our city, that's really important, because you keep our city clean, and you keep it, you make sure that it's safe by keeping it clean. Did you know that? Because it keeps the disease, and it keeps us healthy, by getting that stuff off the street, and out of the alleyways, and getting those things put away, and it makes our city more beautiful. So I want, we want to thank each and every one of you so much for what you did. We have a lot of certificates here, and, and, we'll try, long, this is to the Long Elementary Student Council, who, is there a president? Okay, I guess you get that, Lisa Fazan, teacher, or... Okay, and so now, this is, I'm gonna let, I'm letting the city manager do this. He likes, he likes these code arrangers, and I'm still waiting for my subsidiary to be chief code arranger. You guys are all going to be asked junior code arrangers by the city manager, right? Right this period?
I say, I say, and Strad, I say, and I say. I beg you, Mendozas, every guy.
Frankie Yankovic.
Are you a big guy?
Yeah.
No. Auntie Valla? No? Jackie Valla? Evan Darder?
There's no beer in heaven.
Louis Fuentes? Joel Garcia? Mike Garcia? Valerie Martinez? Alexa Gonzalez? Yameli Leyna? Erashi Leyna? Robby Cudian? Eric Gilantlan? Michael Eduard? Manuel Oca Negra? William Testesales? Sammy Rivera? Zachary Sarzera? Miranda Vasquez? Liliana Castellano? Catherine Garcia? Michael Pedraza? Gloria Escudilla? Michaela Smith? Natalie Garcia? Summer Lucio? Deanna Gortiz? And Regina Baracas?
Okay, who didn't get a certificate? What, what's your name? Good, tell them. Give us a second. I didn't know that, yes, didn't get one. We've got Natalie Garcia, I think, and Mendozas, and Robert Vera. We'll hand those to your advisor, she'll give those to them, and we're gonna get your two. You can get your certificate, we're gonna get your two, okay? All right, congratulations, and thank you all so much. We don't want to sit down and recognize another group of couples that we have today, and that's the, anybody here from the Marine, over there, Catholic, Key Club? Anybody from the other leg, Key Club? Get those, yeah. Come out from Grace, uh, like Fellowship, anybody here from... Okay, thank you. That's gonna do the same thing, face Charlie, and he's gonna take your pictures.
Count of three, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, and so tell us, tell us your name.
Here it goes.
Okay, congratulations, we have a certificate in here for you, one of you can have a certificate. So, I know we're here with Brett and I, but we want to thank you also for the great service that you did for Harlingen Saturday, and so, and congratulations. Then, we're here from Tamayo House. Tamayo House, American Legion Post Number 205. American Legion, there we go. We want to thank you so much for... Okay, place the camera.
Count of three.
You're Edward, Edward DePere.
One, two, one, two, three. Very good.
Give those, and you hand those out for us, okay? Thanks again. Matthew James, Matthew here, and Albert Condon, with Citizens Police Academy. Tom, thanks you so much for helping out on Saturday, we appreciate it. It's a great service for our community, and thank you for being in Citizens Police Academy.
One, two, three. There you go.
Thanks. Item three is approval of the minutes for September 4th, 2013, and September 18th, 2013.
I have one change to the September 4th minutes on page 11. It says Commissioner Mesmore reappointed Bo O'Rear to the Construction Board adjustments, appointed Tom Allen to the Harlingen Pride Advisory Board, that was me to do that.
Okay. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? That correction is your motion to approve both sets?
So moved, second.
All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign, motion carries. Uh, consent agenda items four, A, B, and C, is your motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt four, A, B, and C. Good.
All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign, motion carries. Item five, consider take action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2014, in the amount of $103,257 for teen service programs.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The next two items on your agenda, item five and item six, are contracts with the Boys and, between the city and the Boys and Girls Club. One, number five, for teen services, and number six, for youth services. You budgeted for both of these separately, $103,000 out of recreation, and 77 out of special services. Now, the teen service programs include the Tina Fender Program, teen mentoring, and other recreational and social activities, and again, that's number five. Number six, having to do with youth services, that specifically deals with the satellite units, and assisting those endeavors at the housing developments, Lemoyne Garden, Ponita Park, and Los Vecinos. Gerald Gathright, Director of Harlingen Boys and Girls Club is here if you have any questions, otherwise staff recommends approval.
Is this the same amount as last year, or an increase?
There is a, an increase, I think, whatever CIP was, there's an increase, yes. As approved in the budget.
I'd point out that on page one of the proposed public services contract, we've got a disagreement between the amount of money that's written out, and the dollars that are put there numerically. It says 101,670 and 96,100, and then the dollar amount that says 103,257, so we just need to correct that in the...
We'll get that correct on the track. Thank you. It should be 103,257.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the contract for the teens?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign, motion carries. Item six, consider take action to approve contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2014, the amount of $77,604 for youth service programs. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved, second.
Or second?
I'll second.
So any discussion or questions? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider take action to approve the renewal of the contract for the city's tennis professional for fiscal year 2014.
Mayor, City Commissioners, this is...
Before you go to the next item, may I just say one thing? Yes. Okay, my name's Joe Pettis, and I am the Chief Volunteer Officer now with the Boys and Girls Club, and I just wanted to say thank you. Actually, I've been in the community for 21 years, and for 10 years, I spent as a coach, coaching basketball, and had a wonderful opportunity with, and saw the great work that was done there, and then they asked me to be a part of the board, and now they've asked me to leave. I question their judgment as that, but, but I just want to say, we, we really do appreciate the city's support, and I know you would agree with me that we could have, I don't know, a better leader than Gerald Gathright, whose heart is totally with doing what's the right for our, for our youth and our, and our children, for the city. So I just wanted to take a moment of privilege to say thank you. Thank you.
We want to thank you. We want to thank you, I'm sure everyone up here wants to thank, every board member of the Boys and Girls Club, you, all of the staff, and all of the volunteers, for the great work that they do. They stepped in about 15 years ago to take over this important responsibility for the city. They did it, they can do it professionally, because that's, that's your business.
Excellent.
And they did it for a lower cost, and they're doing a lot of important work with our youth to help them stay on the right path, and so, Joe, thank you so much for your...
You're very welcome, and I'll, I'll share that gratitude back with the board. We meet, actually, next Thursday, so God bless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, tennis.
Mayor Commissioners, yes, item seven is the renewal of the contract between the city and the city's tennis pro, Don Brandon Ramsour. Other than the dates in the contract, the contract is substantially similar to that as of the contract the last five years. Don is here if you have any questions, but in general, the city compensates the tennis pro $2,000 a month for on the HEB Tennis Center. He receives 75% of court fees, and he's allowed to conduct paid lessons and host tournaments. And again, this is a similar contract to that of the last five years. Don's here if you have any questions, and staff recommends approval.
And how long is this contract for?
For one year, for the fiscal year.
I want to ask you something. I never see this contract before, you never told us anything about this contract. Are they gonna renew it or not? What are you gonna send to us, something to, that is known, for the contract?
That the contract had expired?
Yeah. This part, nobody can use, you know, not, not the community.
Yes, it's open to the public. I mean, there's a, I believe it's a fee of a dollar. Come on up, I'll give you that. To use the courts, yes.
Yeah, it's a public tennis center.
Tell him, tell him what you do, tell the Commissioner what you do.
Yeah, because I don't know, I don't know anything about this part.
Yeah, I run the HEB Tennis Center there in Pendleton Park, and I've been here since like 1997, so, we, you know, we give lessons, we have leagues out there, we have this tournaments, you know, for the city, school tournaments, we have out-of-state tournaments that come in for the last, I don't know how many years, and then we help with the professional men's tour that comes out here to the futures tournament.
And anybody can use it?
Yeah, it's open to the public. It's a dollar for a kid, and it's $2 for adult. It's very cheap, and there's also memberships, you know, they can pay for. It's like $1.50 for a year for an individual, and $2.50 for a family.
Cool.
He just keeps it, he keeps it organized, and provides services to those who need them out there.
Correct.
They got a store in there too, right?
Not much, I mean, we used to have a pro shop, but we, now we have like a trailer, and that's what, hopefully, we can, we're working on getting the second phase done in another year, I guess, is what I was hearing, maybe, you know, a couple of years ago, they were telling me, we had like three years before they could get back, you know, on the phase again, but we definitely need restrooms out there. Tonight, I'll have like about 36 ladies out there tonight, from like Brownsville and Simran, it's competitive league play, but we're dealing with one, one toilet in the trailer, and that's it.
There's no restroom?
Well, just one, that's it. We have the restrooms out of the park, park, but, you know, for the ladies, they don't like using those, so...
So we don't, we don't have a pro shop either? It's a trailer?
It's just a trailer, yeah. I mean, you know, I don't stuff it with anything anymore, once we got our pro shop knocked down from the, you know, from the renovation, it's too easy to get in there, and I've already been robbed, you know, I don't know how many times, like four or five times over the years. Now that we brought it inside, and we got an alarm, it helps, you know, it's a lot better, but in the days, you know, when we were going through this, it was, it was pretty tough dealing out there.
All right. Any, any other questions for Paul, or for Don? Then is there a motion to approve renewal of the contract?
Do you have to make a motion to approve renewal of the contract, item number seven?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Consider take action to approve or disapprove of proposed off-leash dog run in Victor Park.
Mayor Commissioners, about a year ago this time, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was wrapping up a pretty lengthy process, and eventually adopted the city's Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. What that needs assessment did was identify about $11 million worth of improvements that they identified in the city's park system as a whole. In Victor Park specifically, there were about $1.1 million worth of improvements. One of those improvements they identified was the creation of a dog park, and you can see it's listed there, $25,000 line item. They even identified a site for the dog park at that time. If I get my legs to work, which ones are they? This is Victor Park. I'll have to get your bearings. This is Highway 77, HEB, and the theater will be here, Walmart will be over here. This is M Street coming into the park, and entering Tony Butler Golf Course. So as you come off down M Street, this is the area here. These are the public tennis courts. This is Victor Pool. This is the large rental pavilion that we have, and these are parking lots. You can tell them the day this picture was taken, there was quite a bit of activity going on, but this is the site that we're talking about, not the entire five or six acres out here, but just the three acres there. Earlier this year, the new Harlingen Rotary President approached city staff about possibly funding of this project, and so we began those discussions, presented it last month to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They unanimously, unanimously approved not only the project, but the proposed funding mechanism. Rotary has proposed to fundraise the amount of about $18,000 of the $25,000 project. The city's general fund will cover the remaining amount. So, this is the proposed design of the park. Again, what you saw before, it's kind of north-south oriented, this is east-west oriented, so you can see it better. Again, this is the tennis courts, this will be the large rental pavilion, this is the existing restroom at the site. So it would be a three-acre dog park. We chose this site, or the Parks Board chose this site because it's already irrigated. It's easily accessible to the restroom, and there's access to parking, and it's more centrally located than some other parks. Small dog area here is about three-quarters of an acre, the large dog area, which is 25 pounds and over, is about two acres. Double gates to allow it to keep the, any strays from getting out, and there would be a doggy water fountain, a walking trail, things like that. So the issue tonight before you is basically allowing this project to move forward if you so choose. If that happens, Rotary will move forward with their, their fundraising, and their president is here tonight to briefly discuss that fundraising. And secondly, staff will work with the Parks Board and the city's Health Department over the next few months to come up with a pretty good set of rules for the park. It will be free and open to the public, there will be no charge. It'll probably, it'll likely be open from sunup to sundown, like most of our other parks, and so, it's pretty much it.
Can you go back the slide? Okay. There is that pavilion. I was trying to see the pavilion.
So is there gonna be land left over between the access road and the dog park?
Yes, there will be.
And how much land is there?
There's about five and a half acres, I believe, and we're gonna use three of it.
Okay.
Paul, would that, would this plan ultimately displace any other regular activity we had there? Because I know, I know that youth football uses, they can sort of told that they have to practice there at Victor Park, would that displace any of that activity?
I'm not aware of them using this particular area, this side of the park for, for practice, if that's the case.
Go back one second. They, they use the area to the...
Yeah, this is their area, they do use it up against the canal there?
No, no.
This is the area they have under contract with the city.
Right, right. Over here on the, on the, on the rights, over the left side of that screen, that's a canal, that's an irrigation canal.
This is the canal, yes.
Right.
Obviously, this is new to Harlingen, but it's been to the United States for quite a long time, so there are standard rules and regulations and operating procedures, and bramies tags, and leashes, and all those sorts of rules and regs.
Yes, and we're gonna take that into consideration, and obviously, with the number of visitors that we have here, we're gonna try to have as standard a set of rules as we can.
So if we wanted to do more of this around the city in the future, we're thinking three acres to do this is the minimum?
From, what, the research that we did, yes, that's the minimum, especially if you, because we need to have a small dog area, large dog area, yes.
I'm pretty sure that people's gonna be happy about this, right?
We think so.
And I understand you're gonna have some dogs on leashes, and some without leashes. Small will be on leash, and the large will be off leash. It's not gonna work.
This is all off leash. Once they're inside, they're off leash.
And that's the only concern I have, and I'm 100% for it, I think it's a great idea, but there's no one there to sort of patrol that, and so what happens when you wind up with a pit bull running around in the big dog area? Does everybody vacate, or...
And again, that's one of those things, and that's one of those issues, that's one of those issues that we're gonna vet over the next few months, coming up with this set of rules.
I know McCallan just finished, it's less than six months old, and we could probably find out how it's going there.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only issue I see, that I was, the fact that it has a fence all the way around it is important, so your dog doesn't wind up on the access road or highway, so I think, I think it's great.
Right, and this is actually gonna be a taller fence, and we've...
And again, this is a similar contract to that of the last five years. Don's here, we have the question and staff are going to answer it.
And how long is this contract for?
For one year, for the fiscal year.
I want to ask you something. I never see this contract before, you never tell us anything about this contract. Are they going to renew it or not? What are you going to send to us? Something to let us know for the contract?
That the contract had expired?
Yeah. This part, nobody can use it, you're right. Not the community.
Yes, it's open to the public. I mean, there's a, I believe it's a fee of a dollar. Come on up. To use the courts, yes.
Yeah, it's a public tennis center.
Tell him what, tell him what you do. Tell the commissioner what you do.
Because I don't know anything about this part.
Yeah, I run the HEB tennis center there in Middleton Park. And I've been here since like 1997, so. We, you know, we give lessons, we have leagues out there, we have these tournaments, you know, for the city, school tournaments, we have out of state tournaments that come in for the last, I don't know how many years, and then we help with the professional men's tour that comes out here to the futures tournament.
And anybody can use it?
Yeah, it's open to the public. It's a dollar for a kid and it's two dollars for adults. It's very cheap and there's also memberships, you know, they can pay for. It's like 150 for a year for an individual and 250 for a family.
He just keeps it, he keeps it organized and provides services to those who need them out there.
Correct.
They got a store in there too, right?
Eh, not much. We used to have a pro shop, but we, now we have like a trailer and that's what hopefully we can, we're working on getting the second phase done in another year, I guess, is what I was hearing maybe. You know, a couple of years ago, they were telling me we had like three years before they could get back, you know, on the phase again, but we definitely need restrooms out there. Tonight, I'll have like about 36 ladies out there tonight from like Brownsville and Simroon, it's competitive league play, but we're dealing with one toilet in a trailer and that's it.
There's no restroom?
Well, just one, that's it. We have the restrooms out of the park park, but you know, for the ladies, they don't like using those, so.
So we don't, we don't have a pro shop either? It's a trailer.
It's just a trailer, yeah. I'm, you know, I don't stuff it with anything anymore. Once we got our pro shop knocked down from the, you know, from the renovation, it's too easy to get in there. I've already been robbed, you know, I don't know how many times, like four or five times over the years. Now that we brought it inside and we got an alarm, it helps, you know, it's a lot better. But in the days, you know, when we were going through this, it was, it was pretty tough dealing out there.
All right. Any, any other questions for Paul or for Don? Then is there a motion to approve renewal of the contract?
Do you have to make a motion to approve renewal of the contract? Item number seven.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Consider take action to approve or disapprove of proposed off-leash dog run in Victor Park.
Mayor Commissioners, about a year ago this time, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was wrapping up a pretty lengthy process and eventually adopted the city's Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. What that needs assessment did was identify about 11 million dollars worth of improvements that they identified in the city's park system as a whole. In Victor Park specifically, there were about 1.1 million dollars worth of improvements. One of those improvements they identified was the creation of a dog park. You can see it's listed there as a $25,000 line item. They even identified a site for the dog park at that time. If I get my legs to work. This is Victor Park. I have to get your bearings. This is Highway 77, HEB, and the theater will be here, Walmart will be over here. This is M Street coming into the park and entering Tony Butler Golf Course. So as you come off down M Street, this is the area here. These are the public tennis courts. This is Victor Pool. This is the large rental pavilion that we have, and these are parking lots. You can tell them the day this picture was taken, there was quite a bit of activity going on. But this is the site that we're talking about, not the entire five or six acres out here, but just the three acres there. Earlier this year, the new Harlingen Rotary President approached city staff about possibly funding of this project. And so we began those discussions, presented it last month to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They unanimously, unanimously approved not only the project, but the proposed funding mechanism. Rotary has proposed to fundraise the amount of about 18,000 dollars of the 25,000 dollar project. The city's general fund will cover the remaining amount. So this is the proposed design of the park. Again, what you saw before, it's kind of north-south oriented. This is east-west oriented, so you can see it better. Again, this is the tennis courts, this will be the large rental pavilion. This is the existing restroom at the site. So it would be a three-acre dog park. We chose this site, or the Parks Board chose this site because it's already irrigated. It's easily accessible to the restroom and there's access to parking, and it's more centrally located than some other parks. Small dog area here is about three-quarters of an acre. The large dog area, which is 25 pounds and over, is about two acres. Double gates to allow it to keep the, any strays from getting out. And there would be a doggy water fountain, a walking trail, things like that. So the issue tonight before you is basically allowing this project to move forward if you so choose. If that happens, Rotary will move forward with their fundraising, and their president is here tonight to briefly discuss that fundraising. And secondly, staff will work with the Parks Board and the city's health department over the next few months to come up with a pretty good set of rules for the park. It will be free and open to the public, there will be no charge. It'll probably, it'll likely be open from sunup to sundown, like most of our other parks. And so it's pretty much it.
Can you go back the slide? Okay. There is that pavilion. I was trying to see the pavilion.
So is there going to be land left over between the access road and the dog park?
Yes, there will.
And how much land is there?
There's about five and a half acres, I believe, and we're going to use three of it.
Okay.
Paul, would that, would this plan ultimately displace any other regular activity we had there? Because I know, I know that youth football uses, they can sort of told that they have to practice there at Victor Park. Would that displace any of that activity?
I'm not aware of them using this particular area, this side of the park for, for practice, if that's the case.
Go back one second. They, they use the area?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is their area. They do use that up against the canal there?
No, no.
This is the area they have under contract with the city.
Right, yeah, over here on the, on the, on the rights, on the left side of that screen, that's a canal, that's an irrigation canal.
This is the canal, yes.
Obviously, this is new to Harlingen.
Yes.
But it's been to the United States for quite a long time.
Yes.
So there are standard rules and regulations and operating procedures and bramies tags and leashes.
Yes, and city tags.
All those sorts of rules and regs.
Yes, and we're going to take that into consideration. And obviously with the number of visitors that we have here, we're going to try to have as standard a set of rules as we can.
So if we wanted to do more of this around the city in the future, we're thinking three acres to do this is the minimum?
From, well, the research that we did, yes, that's the minimum, especially if you, because we need to have a small dog area, large dog area.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure that people are going to be happy about this, right?
We think so.
And I understand you're going to have some dogs on leashes and some without leashes. Small will be on leash and the large will be off leash.
This is all, this is all off leash. Once they're inside. Once they're inside, they're off leash.
And that's the only concern I have, and I'm 100% for it. I think it's a great idea, but there's no one there to sort of patrol that, and so what happens when you wind up with a pit bull running around in the big dog area? Does everybody vacate or?
And again, that's one of those things, and that's one of those issues, that's one of those issues that we're going to vet over the next few months coming up with this set of rules.
I know McCallan just finished, it's less than six months old, and we could probably find out how it's going there.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only issue I see that I was, the fact that it has a fence all the way around it is important so your dog doesn't wind up on the access road or highway, so I think, I think it's great.
Right, and this is actually going to be a taller fence than we would normally have. What's planned is a, is a five-foot black vinyl chain link fence, and it'll be a little bit more decorative than your standard chain link fence, plus it'll distinguish the park from the rest of the area. With the exception of adjacent to the frontage, and that's where the Parks Board said, well, we'd like, we'd like to see a little bit higher there, six feet, so that's.
And the walking trail is how long? Because I imagine you'll have some people use that within.
I would say it's more than about an eighth of a mile.
It's not very much.
Not very much. And that's a project we'll complete in-house.
I think it's great.
Okay, Trey, say anything.
Yeah. Mayor Commissioners, my name's Trey Peacock. I'm the current president of the Harlingen Rotary Club. We do a signature project every year. This year I chose to do two. One I'm doing for the Sunny Glen Home, but the second one, which is actually the major one, the one that we dedicated 18,000 for, is this dog park. The 18,000, we've run a budget and we think that the 18,000 will pay for all the fencing and the utilities to make the dog drinking fountain, which will leave the city with basically having to put in the waste stations, the baggie stations, the benches and the trail you see there that's in the shape of a bone. So last month, we went to the Parks Advisory Board and asked them for their permission to even use one of the parks here. I saw a need, I had some people, I'm not the one that originated this idea. I had a couple of members ask me what I was going to do and I had no clue. I asked them for suggestions and a couple of their ideas were the same, and it was a dog park in Harlingen, since we don't have one. I don't currently have a dog, but I have had dogs in the past, and I was, as soon as I heard it, I said, yes, that's what I want to do. So because the Parks Board was behind us 100%, we would like to donate that money. We would like to give this to the city from our club for the citizens to use. We have a fundraiser that's starting this weekend, in fact, which will fund about 75% of that money. So we're going to have most of the money as of next week. The rest of the money we'll get by the end of February, so March is when we're willing to release those funds and, and get this park in, and I'd like to get it in before my year ends, which happens to be the last day of June. So we're hoping to get by May, by the end of May, have at least our portion done and have the city committed to doing their portion, which is all phase one. And we hope that by doing that, by giving this kind of commitment from our club, that you agree to continue on and possibly look for a phase two, phase three, which could be different little, you know, amenities in there, little fire hydrants and stuff like that, who the dogs are playing with. So I ask for your, for your acceptance. Allow us to give you a donation to get this started. Thank you. Any questions?
I think it's a great, great idea, fantastic. Plead your board for putting this, making this offer to the city. A great gesture. Okay. All right, Parks Board's got it all worked out, we're going to work on, work out all the details. So is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say aye. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Off-leash and running. Public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow light industry manufacturing rail to truck handling station in a general retail district located east of 3502 Wilson Road, bearing legal description of 7.95 acres, west 10 acres of Block B of Royce Track out of survey 26.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow rail to truck handling station property is located on the north side of Wilson Road, just west of the expressway 77, which is this property here. This is basically an amendment or expansion to an SUV that was granted to the same applicant back in February 2012 for the same use, which is basically on this property here to the west of this tract of land. You see, this subject property is currently vacant. This is the site plan he's showing, proposing for the site. This is the, one of the rail stations that's on the west side of the different track. This is the one he's proposing. It's a full structure and the parking of the area. The hours of operation would generally be from Monday to Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00 PM. Request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Neither of the departments any objections to the request. And these rails, they would generally be set back about 400 feet north of Wilson Road. They won't be visible from Wilson Road. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, and the affected property owners within a 200-foot radius of this property were also notified, which also approved the school district, and staff didn't receive any objections to the request. Staff has recommended approval with conditions, and the P&amp;Z Commission also recommended approval with condition, based on staff recommendation, with the additional condition that they provide landscape buffer along the frontage of this property. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
Is this the same piece of property that was zoned residential and unzoned?
It was owned, planned development for residential use, Commissioner, and they didn't own the general retail to come in for this particular reason.
No, I think questions, was this one we just did like about three weeks ago?
Yes, but it was on PD, planned development, to general retail.
Right.
It was originally general retail.
You can't do it all in one step.
Right, right.
And those rails currently do not exist, is that correct? They're going to have to put in a spur?
They're going to have to put in a spur for this one here. I believe this one they're currently working on already doesn't exist, I mean, this one does.
And so we're only talking about the one piece of property, not both pieces of property?
Right, it's for, this is the one that was approved back in February 2012, which is this track, and this is the one he's proposing.
So we approved one with, with a rail already?
Right.
So you're now requesting a second rail?
Correct.
What sort of investment is going to be made in the project?
I don't think, the applicant, if I can answer that.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Investment on the fronting will be basically the tracks being built of the properties. Future development will be warehousing as needed, but for now will be tracks and compact in the area for tri-zoning of, you know, non-hazard materials, metals, lumber, those type of materials.
So you plan on building all this? I thought it would just be an open area.
For now, an open area, compact in the grounds to sustain this materials, but further down the road, as the projects evolve and they request inside storage for goods, we'll develop warehousing eventually at one point.
So in the meantime, you're going to put the rails in with no building?
Exactly.
And, and no plans for building, no concrete plans?
At the moment, no.
And so is that going to be Kalachi or?
Kalachi.
And so what are you going to be using the rails for without building?
Offloading materials like metals, lumber.
Now, that, I, I, I'm a little concerned about putting this right there because we're, it's right across, isn't that right across the sports complex? You're telling me you're going to put down a huge area of Kalachi with, putting a bunch of trucks on there?
We, we've, the previous time we discussed buffers zones for water retention, sewer stone water retention and greenery areas to control some of the dust, if any. Furthermore, we can talk about, you know, having a water truck there to, to appease that concern.
I mean, at one, you know, mixed emotions about it because obviously it's good use of the rail line there to put it, put that in. We have Gilmae Flower, whatever facility that was, but now you've got some other, you know, that's a school, that's a gymnasium dance school there, just to the east of it, and then you've got the Cameron County Annex there. We have a school, then just another few blocks to the west, and the new Performing Arts Theater. I'm just wondering if that's the right place for this type of activity.
Do you not own the land that's, that's, that's on the street?
To the west of this new mine proposed area.
No, no, I'm looking to the south, and I see Wilson Road.
Yes, sir.
I see your proposed laydown area, but then I see there's a blank area that is not highlighted quite. Is it just not highlighted quite because that's where you're not going to put, that's where you can put Kalachi? And the other parts will not have?
Where's your access point?
We currently own the portion that's to the west, if you will, and we're adding about eight acres of property into it.
But you own from, because to the west here is the Cameron County.
Mm-hmm, just, just, just east of there.
And then you own all the way over to, almost to the gym?
Almost to the gym. We're adding, we're adding eight acres.
Right.
Adjacent to the, to the gym, exactly.
That, that's where my question was, is, is this the type of business we want in that particular area? I know that you're taking advantage of the rail.
Well, he's already doing it, right? He already has a rail there.
Well, and furthermore, there's other warehouses further east that also do the same type of activity.
They do the same type of thing.
Loading of merchandise is off a rail as well.
Except they have buildings.
That is correct. At one point, we may also do the same thing in the, in the buildings as, as.
I'm going to go to item A, this is the public hearing, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this specific use permit?
Is that all my time?
No, you can speak, you can now, you were just answering our questions, you can speak in favor of it if you want, or tell us more about it if you want. You just have to be recognized.
Okay, appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing that all closed, I will carry it, go to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading when they both mention specific use permit, and read the caption, please.
Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27 of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to one and latter to allow light industry manufacturing rail to truck handling station in a general retail GR district located east of 3502 Wilson Road, bearing a legal description of the 7.95 acres of the west 10 acres of Block B of Royce Track out of survey 26. Subject to one, providing and maintaining landscaping buffer along the frontage of the property along Wilson Road. Two, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces. Three, notify and receive approval from the city if hazardous material is to be handled, as well as obtaining the proper state permits. Four, obtain proper building permits if a building is to be constructed. Five, must pass a fire inspection prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And six, comply with all pertinent city ordinances, codes, and standards prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
I just remembered that not too far from here, across the expressway and down and up, or there was that truck stop terminal that was big, had a lot of Kalachi laid down there, and a lot of truck traffic laid down there, and we had a lot of, we got lots of issues with the neighbors because of that, and I sure would hate for us to wake up, you know, after this thing is constructed and have a lot of dust and issues with our, our major, one of our major parks right across the street. I'm just, you know, concerned about it. I'd like to, I'd like to know more, and might suggest that we table this and get some more information about how this is all going to fit together.
Hey, I can make a couple of comments. Growing up in an industrial town, there was nothing to have stuff next door where there were mountains of coal or anything else. This is to the north of the school and the park, and the wind doesn't blow out of the north but 10, 12 days a year. If the wind was out of the south, I'd, Mayor, I'd be a little more concerned with, along with you, but for me, it's pretty much of a non-event. You plant trees and bushes on the south side, you're going to hide this, and you plant trees and bushes on the west side, you'll, you'll break that wind that's coming from the west, northwest in the winter, and it'll help contain it. And so I, I think it's a good idea.
And that, that may do it, I mean, and I recognize the wind blows out of the south east most of the time, that's going to, should, should carry that dust away from the park, but I just.
He already has a permit for the track to the west?
That is very concerned. We have it for the, for the 20 acres to the west, and we're adding eight acres to make it.
Oh, so you're adding eight out of 20 acres then? Basically, you already have 20.
Yes, sir.
So I, uh.
Then it makes it moot. Makes the point.
Really moot, yeah. It's already there.
And it's already there. All we're doing is adding.
Has read the descriptions.
10 or 15% onto it's already existing.
I want to comment, there's some act properties just real close to where we are, and I mean, farmers actually will kick out more dust when they're actually working the land, if you will.
So I would, I'll make a motion to approve of number nine is read by our attorney.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, board of appointments.
Valerie Drake to the tennis board.
Okay, your motion to approve the board of appointments?
Make a motion, we approve the board of appointments.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item 11, closed executive session, chapter 551, subchapter B, ETC, Government Code, Section 5, 1.71, consultation with the city attorney to seek legal advice regarding Charles C. Lee versus City of Harlingen, survey 10, City 233. So your motion, go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to the executive session, clearly I am not ready.
Okay, your second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to go to the back room and discuss pending litigation with our attorney and what we're talking about citizen communication. I'm proud of the executive session at 6:38, go to last item, which is citizen communication.
Mayor, I have Mr. Martin.
Yes. I'm asking for more than two minutes now. This is for all the peoples in the city limits of Harlingen.
Hey, Mr. Martin, you need to, okay, you need to state, first of all, we'd ask you to state your name.
Okay.
And your, and your residence address.
Yes, sir.
I can't stay more than two minutes.
Okay.
I'm late for a church, church thing.
I'll talk fast. Thank you for your kindness. My name's Edward Charles Martin, I was born 1950. I fought communism. I've been a resident of Harlingen for.
Can you give us your residence address, please?
318 West Jackson Avenue, I'm helping a family reduce a property over there in the old part of town. Approximately 100 days ago, I went to Deputy Chief Mayor, and I asked him why there was so much smoke and narcotics in the old park. The Harlingen Police Department has really come to the bat in the last 100 days. They've worked so hard. I've only talked to more than 30 different police officers. I've requested hearings with the chief of police, I've been denied. When the STD, STD ratings came out from the Texas Health Department, I sent a 35-page, I think it got to the mayor, I hope it got to the police chief, and I surely hope it got to SIU. Now, I contacted SIU in Cameron County, they did come up and do a couple of quick busts. I went deep undercover for four years, what I know is pretty factual. I've been threatened to be shot in the head and my property's burnt. This has got to do with legalized prostitution, 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 the spread of STDs. It ranks Harlingen very high per 80,000 capita in the rankings of Texas. These are serious issues. There's a plague of the 21st century upon North American now. Over.
Thank you.
I think that the money should be appropriated to start an instant vice squad in Harlingen to take care of this. I also believe that there should be a squad car set out of 513 West Monroe immediately. Deputy Chief Mayor promised me this, he won't see me no more. God bless Harlingen, and I hope you all work this out.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Next.
Boy, I wish I'd had more time.
For the record, I was having to, we went through an NSH road, and I'll make this short and sweet. Saturday, I was at the comprehensive master plan meeting, and Commander Anderson announced that the staff meetings at HPD were open to the public. I've been informed by Chief Wynn that they're not open. On December 7th, 2011, the chief announced an attempt to, to fix the transparency. an attempt to, to, to fix the transparency, and apparently, you know, it takes a long time to fix transparency in Harlingen. So with that in mind, I would hope that in the future, I don't think, in reality, I don't think a staff meeting should be open to the public. There's a lot of stuff that goes on, but when a person goes to a, to a major meeting, and there's about sixty people there, that makes an announcement and is misinformed, it's, it's a bad thing for the city, so I thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe that was all that signed up, and we'll conclude our meeting. We'll return. Thank you all.